Evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Alton Board of Selectmen's Meeting, August 17th, 2020, tomorrow at 6:01 PM. Please all stand up in full allegiance and moment of silence. Mr. Holt, Chief of the Midwest Science and Education.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by our nation. I am here in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Make moments up. So further notice to keep our members staff safe and to comply with the hours A91-8888, the state emergency and the government's orders, restrictions on public cabin. Now the Alton has moved from in-person meetings to remote audio participation. To remotely attend the meetings, audio and video, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. On the day of the meeting, our instructions to telephone the Selectmen's Office, 603-875-2113, or 603-875-0229. There continues to be no public input at this time. Amendment to it. One would be on new business, number two, warrant articles for nonprofit organizations. I have one, simple one, Mr. Chairman. Sir, just for a quick discussion, I don't want to spend any time on it, is the employee health insurance. Okay.
This is number three, new business.
Yes, anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Bills for the month.
More bills.
What vote was that one?
Monthly bills. Or employee health insurance.
You start, you're trying to get out of it easy.
The agenda's filling up.
Number four. Four. Number five. Number four was monthly bills.
Monthly bills.
Anybody else?
Yes. And under new business, Water Van Stand, Stony Ridge, and Permit.
How about if we combine that with number one?
Yeah, okay.
You're going to be bringing that one up.
Yep, and the second would be old business, bringing up the Alton Bay Community Center repairs and maintenance. No, I said two.
Well, you're on your old business. Old business, would you like to put the museum on that one too?
Yes.
Okay, painting. Number one is what?
Number one would be the Alton Bay Community Center.
Okay.
Along, and we're going to put parentheses right after that, comma right after that, there's a human museum.
I'd like to say that paint looks great.
And then what's number two?
Let's get on that.
Did you have a number two?
That was, it's all in the same one.
Oh, okay, all right.
You think we should ask the other board members our question?
Yes, if we can right now.
Either that, or do we want to make that part of the...
Go ahead.
Under new business, subject of selectmen attending political rallies.
Selectmen attending political rallies.
Or not rallies or meetings, that's what it is.
Are we going to Washington?
No. Majority. The little area. Majority or a forum.
Why is you not discussing town business?
Well, we can bring it up, and then that would be one for the town administrative contact, we have an attorney, and I know what he'll say. What he said years ago when I was a Selectman.
Same thing.
Well, no, you can go to him. It's called a chance meeting.
Yeah.
But as long as no business is discussed, the town business is discussed, nobody can say anything. It's whether or not the public, the way the public sees it. That's what he reported back in 2000 to the Board of Selectmen.
But he didn't, like 2000.
But basically, it's called a chance meeting.
It's a 91A.
But it'd be like, let's say, three Republican selectmen went to the state Republican convention. Well, you got it wrong. Will they all sit together? Not necessarily.
All right, everybody apart.
And you're not doing business.
No, so telling that.
Right.
Okay, okay. So right now...
I just rocked the question up, I didn't know.
He still wanted on the agenda or no? Um, you just gave us a good answer, I think, so, okay. All right, this time here, I'll call for approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
Which is made by Rupert Whitworth, second by Virgil Martin, Donald to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion. Hold the board, Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitworth, yes, voting affirmative. This time, announcements. I'm going to let Town Administrator do that, because she has it on administrative report, so there are no announcements tonight. Submission of public comments, questions, and concerns. One comment or concern came in today, gentlemen. Monique DeRoche, to follow up. Hello, I'm writing to you because I'm appalled at the behavior of the people in charge of the car show that is happening today, August 16th, as well as the Board of Selectmen. Was that a meeting that discussed the car show and the stipulation compromises that were agreed upon? Felt that though Mr. Sample was hostile at the meeting, Monique DeRoche was only looking for some understanding, respect for the fact that a company is trying to run a business. The car show was overtaken, has overtaken the area of money square in the past, and as such, the business owners were concerned. This morning, Mr. Sample has parked his vehicle directly in front of Tree Valley Hardware Store, as well as other spots. And it's still got to be okay for them to be from Town Hall, Maxville Realty, and down to Railroad Card. Now, this year has gotten, now this year, he has got permits to have food trucks as well, traffic, and people are insane in the downtown area. What I do not understand is why this beautiful car show cannot happen down at the bay, where there are plenty of parking spots, which are town property, and plenty of local businesses that could fit a foot, foot traffic. I was disappointed to say at least. Look forward to your response, regards, Monique DeRoche, sent my eye tag. In response to this, Mr. Sample also came to me, and I would ask Mr. Sample if he can respond to this letter and get back to the Board of Selectmen.
This will be on the next agenda.
This will be on the next agenda, as long as Mr. Sample can respond, or come on through the teleprompter there and talk to us. Let us know what has happened, also if we can get a report back from the Police Department on that. Mr. Jim.
Yes, sir.
This letter is sent, I believe, to the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes, but we have to hear both sides before we...
Well, yeah, but we're, I don't think Mr. Sample should be answering this letter. They want to answer what, I want to know what, I want to know if these issues that Monique is talking about in here are legitimate. I did not come downtown, I was at my store all day, because there was only two of us on. I know the traffic racked up to my store, but I don't know what happened down in the center of town, so it's not fair for me to make judgment on this or say anything on it without hearing both sides of the story. Or the Board, as a matter of fact, I think. At least that's my opinion, how the rest do you feel?
Yeah, that's good. I think Mr. DeRoche should be present as well.
Which could, we could have an appointment set up between the...
He should be here as well to speak his, his half. Well, we don't want us to, everybody to get in the arguments like before, that...
No, Josh, Josh will only allow one speaker at a time. All right, Josh. Appreciate it, sir. So if there's nothing else, we'll move on from this? And if we can't have it next week, the Town Administrator will get back to us as soon as this will be done. Moving on to new business, Water Van Stand Committee, water ski show request, and Stony Ridge, along with this president of the store, Rochelle.
Yes, on behalf of the Water Van Stand Committee, we have a few requests for the water ski show on the 22nd. And that would be in the form of basically parking spaces.
Why so many?
Because the ski show people, they have like six or seven cars. And they have two boats and their trailers.
We have to close that ramp, the only ramp?
The ramp's going to have to be closed during the ski show, yes, like it was last year. Yeah. And the ramp will have to be closed between, basically between two and four.
When's the ski show, this weekend?
Ski show is this weekend at three.
So we have to get signs up now, saying that it's going to be closed another day.
It's going to be Saturday, unless, rain day for the next day, Sunday. We want to have, we want to have parking spaces in front of the, of the community center. One alongside, which would be seven, one alongside the boat ramp itself, and then one alongside the land van stand, where the announcement would be announced from the ski show.
That's something your committee's going to take care of, or are you going to ask the question?
I already, I've already taken the liberty of getting Highway Department, Mr. Roberts, and I'm able to get 10 phones. I'll pick them up on Friday and put them where they necessarily need to be.
There's a way to watch them, a lot of people just move.
Well, we also have the wooden barricades down there at the, at the van stand that you could always use steel, so...
Yeah. So basically, that would be the request for, for that, and one, there is one more thing, is finger dock, for docking alongside the last... To have that available. As far as takeoffs and actual setup, will be on the side, the other side of Shively's, which is on the boat ramp side. They're going to sit on that and take off from there. It makes it nice, because it runs parallel with the land, and they'll be able to back their boats right in there and set everybody up and take off from there. Because the other side, we used last time, but...
Well, that one that goes...
Shively's using that now.
The one that goes parallel, isn't that part of the Shively's?
No. Yes.
And Mr. Shively's giving you permission?
Yes, yes, it is.
Well, we gave him the boat ramp one tool.
That was all part of it?
That's all part of it. We give that to him.
That's Virgil. Might as well connect it.
We had to get permission from him to use it Friday night. And we actually put signs on it and taped it off, so that we can use it just for transport, for the water van stand. So he's totally on board.
You can vote on that, and you need just the consensus. Gentlemen, if someone make a motion to grant the Water Van Stand Committee the requests they're making on this, parking near the closing of the ramp. Don't move. Motion made to grant the Water Van Stand Committee the request for closing of the boat ramp. Long as signage request goes up, the closing of it, from time to time, from those two hours. And that parking spot to be granted to them also, be coed on. Finger peer dock at the public boat ramp. And a second by Mr. Whitman, a further discussion. Hold the board, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Next item on that one, Paul?
Yes, the next is the Water Van Stand.
Would you also want the request of the $3,099 be paid?
Yes, that's what I'm getting at.
Oh, I thought you were going to talk about Stony Ridge first.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, you're going to put it all together?
That's all together. So Stony Ridge, that's what I'm talking about. Stony Ridge is $3,099.68 in the Capital Reserve account now, to last checked, was $2,450. So the monies, the monies that were voted on March, has not been put in that account yet, which was $5,500. But we'd like to have permission to pay that bill from the, from the Capital Reserve account with the Financial Department, to pay that, to pay that now and get reimbursed later by the, by the account when it gets put in there. Number one, $5,500 is not in it yet, and it won't be in there until December. So we're requesting to just pay this $3,099 for that now.
We use the process that we use every year for every account.
Yes, using the same process that we use, because later on, we're going to have, the next thing will be the actual repairs itself, which would be over $4,000. So we're going to need these monies transferred over.
Where's the monies being transferred from?
So the way it's been done, here and in every municipality, is before the money actually gets into the Capital Reserve Fund from the boat in March.
We haven't voted on this money and we're spending it? Who voted on it?
It passed in March on the ballot.
And it should be in the, these are Capital Reserves already?
So it gets put in in December, in every Capital Reserve Fund that there was an approval, the money goes in in December.
Money was always put in once we voted on it, and it gets back to the sum.
No, because we have to collect in June, and then in November, December.
You got the money in there first.
And that's done in December.
Mr. Bailey started this when he was Town Administrator, years ago. In the 90s, they did it this way, so they wouldn't have to borrow money throughout the year. Come June, Virgil, if you remember, the school gets a big payment. People in teacher's go on summer break, and a big payment to them. So even out the payments over the years, the money always stayed in the general fund, continue operations of the town. In December, by law, money had to be transferred into those accounts that reimbursed back to the town. So the money is, there is some money sitting there, but we haven't collected the whole taxes for 12 months. And I understand, because I'd say concern when they kick back, not when they found out, they put this in the policy. So all the policy's going in, really, Paul, and the committee, I feel, could have just submitted the bill, had it been paid, because it's a service that has been done on right.
Right, it's been voted on. It's already been voted on.
It's already been voted on before. So he's just coming before, because he went to the trustees and the trust funds, asked the monies, while he ain't giving any money, because none's been given to him.
Right.
Basically, Paul brought it here, the finance officer has the authorization to make, they send it to us, have it paid. She keeps track, and December, that money would be paid, the factor of that.
It's a bookkeeping procedure.
It's a bookkeeping procedure, and there is money in the Esper account, which is, at last checked, was $5,787 some cents. But later on, we may have to transfer, not now, we'll request that at a later date, to, to make any final payments for the repairs. But for now, what we're asking is just to be okay to do the $3,099 to get that bill paid for Stony Ridge.
$3,099 for Stony Ridge, what about the water ski show money itself? Do you want to put that all together?
Put this water ski show money together.
We can make one motion.
Together.
Pay Stony Ridge and...
They've had their deposit.
But actually, it's two different funding sources.
Okay, do one motion that time.
All we're asking right now is just the $3,099, we'll come back for the other, that's what our intent was, and come back at a later date as things progress.
Gentlemen, can I have a motion to approve $3,099.06 to pay Stony Ridge Environmental for the permits and the plans that were drawn up for the water van stand?
Second.
Made by Rupert Whitworth, to approve $3,099.06, payment to Stony Ridge Environmental for permits and plans drawn up for the water van stand. Second by Paul Rochelle, need further discussion? Hold the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
One more question on that. Why did we need a print to repair grips?
It's for the state.
State is required.
The state is requiring all prints and anything, especially wet ones.
Was there any affirmative? Going along with this, second, number two was warrant articles for nonprofit organizations. I was contacted by a nonprofit here in Town Hall, giving them services, they, they submitted their request for their annual payment that the town voted on a warrant article. About a month and a half ago, they've still not seen payment. I was asked if payment was forthcoming, and they said, oh, articles like this were held up, the Board of Selectmen wanted to see. What the revenues are going to look like? So a lot of these nonprofits, such as American Red Cross, Health Community Services, Genesis, and all of them, probably for the money, I don't know who all has submitted their request, but we, as the Selectmen, have not released those funds. And I think it's at this time, or we've given reviews, on the 1st of August, that down 6% in the repayment of taxes this year for the first half, and only were 10%, I think it's time to release those funds if they have requested. Just you feel about it, some of these nonprofits, such as Health Community Services, their rent is paid on a one-month sum. Their rent, I believe, is $15,000 a year. They requested $10,000 this year.
The other thing I'd like to see is before they submit something to us for the sheer vote, the ballot, that they fill out a sheet and send in their administrative costs and what they're spending in this town, instead of just throwing it on the ballot and saying, oh, here you go. Because I know when I was on Budget Committee, we checked them out, and a lot of these organizations were at a 91% and 93% administrative rate.
I've heard that, sir.
So all your money is going to pay the administration, not to help these townspeople. And that's where people make the mistake with these nonprofits.
Chairman, you know, I've been a champion of that philosophy for quite a few years here in town. I think we can ask for their financial statement.
Well, we had a...
And in that, it explains it all. Yeah, well, let's, let's go back to one point. They're requesting what was approved at Town Meeting this year. If you want to discuss this part as far as budget, let's do this at another time. This is what they've requested that's already been approved this year, and that's all I'm asking for, release of funds. Because they are, they are helping out the less fortunate in our community and other places. If we want the due direction at budget time, that we want their financials, that we want to see what their administrative costs, I have no problem with that.
But if we set this up now, we can set them a lot...
Then I would, I'd be jarred off the table. But that has nothing to do with next year's budget, this only has to do with what was requested, like this, or Rochelle.
Same thing.
The same thing. We want to set the rules for budgeting, let's set it up on an agenda item.
Can we get it on the next agenda?
All I'm asking for is the nonprofits that have requested their funding, that was approved at Town Meeting, let them have it now. That should not be tied to the, what was been approved.
That's right, and I agree with that, but can we get it on the next agenda?
Yes.
To discuss it, all right. I agree with that, if they're approved, they should get paid.
Townspeople voted for it.
Especially, especially that.
The same request as I made.
I have no problem helping them, because they, they help a lot of the families, a lot.
They are, they're all volunteer too. There's no payroll down there at that place. But it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter whether it's them or not, any nonprofit that's already been approved.
We have to pay.
We should release it.
Yes.
And because it's not a big, long sum of money we're talking, we're not talking million dollars, we're just talking, I believe, a whole number of $10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's only around $40,000, so...
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'd like to discuss it.
But at the next Budget Meeting, yes.
We can discuss it later, but that's...
Go for it.
Oh, yes.
My question, yes, sir, you can say, they submit a letter to request it, or some of them already request it, do, do we depend that or not?
We, we do normally ask them to submit with their request for a warrant article, their, any information that they give as far as how many customers in the town have been helped, and, you know, statistics.
Yes, normally, each nonprofit, we contact the town, we request the amount of monies that were approved at Town.
Well, if they get paid.
We just don't automatically send a check to them. Okay, the red cross will contact the finance office, the Town Administrator.
Okay, so the motion would be they have to apply as they would pay.
Basically, what I'm asking for is a motion to pay all nonprofits that have requested their payment for $2,020. That were approved at Town.
A second then.
And no longer holding on. All right, someone make that motion, because you're not using my motion. You guys make a motion. I'm making a motion of the several papers of the nonprofits, the citizens, voted to send.
And they have a request. And it was requested.
Motion made by Joe Whitman to release the money to the nonprofits that have requested it, that have approved it, $2,020. Second by Mr. Rochelle, any further discussion? Or Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
That's all that I have, and one more, the number three, which is employee health.
Yes. I could go on through the personnel policy, and I've noticed, which I didn't realize before, the health insurance plans we offer our employees, always employees pay a, we pay 90% of their health and 80% of their dental. Salaryed employees, we pay 100% of the total. There's been discussion, we'll be talking about this at budgetary time, I'd just like to have the board aware of where I'm coming from. There was discussions by the Board, all last year, I believe, of looking at personnel, policy, reference, health insurance, and contributions. I don't think the Board has addressed it, but at this budgetary time, I think it might be something for us to think about.
And discuss for four years.
Discuss for four years, Town Administrator and the Finance Officer were supposed to get back to us with the plans this year when they came in. We looked at what they were, the plans would have been last year, it was too late at budget time. The plans had already been submitted and sent in, and they were going to get back to us this year, budget time, we were going to recommend. Am I mistaken on that?
You are correct, except the state of emergency hit, and we weren't able to, you know, have vendors come in with a, you know, a proposal based on a census, and...
They can't call? Or Zoom?
Do you think it's something we will have in shift budget?
No. It has to be done earlier, much earlier in the year.
That game's almost in Massachusetts by now, but we'd be kicking it so far.
All right, so at budget time, we'll bring it up during our work sessions to discuss about it. One of you gentlemen would like to have it on one of our budget work sessions before the health... What we're going to be paying this year, if you want to discuss what would be on the participation employees, and I suggest that you have it put on the agenda at some time.
I think, I think we've got to have workshops on it, if we're going to discuss that, have a workshop on it, because that's a pretty healthy discussion on insurances and...
It was last year, we had the RMI come out, said it was very unfair. Pay more, but unfortunately, on the else side world, the companies size, they're going to do it, they're going to do it.
They're going to have to pay.
Our employees to, a chance to submit on it. Unfortunately, in the town, we do. I still think with the salary employees, I think it's very unfair to the hourly employees, that the salaries of the highest paid officials in this town, or the department, don't pay anything towards the insurance, and the hourly employees do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there's two different issues that you're talking about. One is different insurance company bids or quotes for different plans, and then you're talking about the employee personnel... About the percentage that the employee pays. And we were going to have something submitted to you, and we were doing things piecemeal, as we could fit it in during the state of emergency, and the Board directed us to have the entire vote on that, and, and I gave you six to eight weeks, or whatever it was that I said about a month ago, and that's being worked on, and that, that will happen, that will happen. The part that I was talking about before was going out for bids to different insurance companies for the plans for the employees. There's no way that that could have been done this spring, that's when it has to be done. There's just no way, with, everything's closed down, even the insurance company's closed down and everything, so...
So that will be addressed while that should be coming up through our budget processing, the employee policy, but...
Yeah.
If you have something you'd like to add to it, please contact Town Administrator, so she can go on the budget workshop. Okay, that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Anything else you want to say on that, Paul? We're on to number four, monthly bills.
I left a note on the monthly bills, because I have a problem with them, and I'm not signing them. Because, I mean, if you look through these, over $1,000 in blue taps this month. I don't know what we're covering, but it's campground or something. I disagree with paying $1,500 to $2,500 every month to all the shows, when we have our town hardware stores here that they don't seem to want to use, and they keep, that's a conglomerate. These are our town hardware stores that I feel that we should be sharing with. And I don't think it's right that we pay big money to them every, every, so many blue taps, when you're buying 30, 40, 50...
Chairman, just for the record, the chairman has recused himself from this discussion.
Yes, okay. Well, okay, I understand that. I mean, it's nothing to do with roving or a store or anything, I just think, these stores have been here their whole life. And we don't spend nothing to them, and they employ town employees, they pay town taxes and everything else, and yet we've got a big conglomerate that we're spending $1,500 to $2,500 every month, and there's no way to try... And there's no way to track their home program, because as you buy, you get money off.
That's right.
As long as you use a phone number and you're registered. Well, I went down to the manager and I talked to him. They don't track that, there's no way of tracking it. Unless we bring in bills and match bill to bill down there. That's the only way you could track it. I think that's wrong for spending that much money down there without using the rest of our town hardware stores.
Can I just add something, Mr. Vice Chairman? So in all of the manifests that I look at, I generally see payments to all three hardware stores.
Two thousand dollars a month, fifteen hundred dollars a month?
No, I'm not talking dollars, I'm just saying that I have seen payments in the most of the manifests to all.
I've been watching.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just marking it out.
But I did say, and I've been watching over shot bills for the last four or five months.
And I don't have an answer for that, so.
And I'd like an answer for the blue taps.
Well, I would.
Because there is a massive amount of blue taps in here.
Some thousand dollars, I think it was.
I'm at eleven hundred dollars, I ain't done the slips yet. There's four hundred dollars worth of hardware and over eleven hundred dollars in tax.
And these taps are all part of piecing.
Yes.
It's like they bought them all at one time.
Yeah, there's four, five, three, five, forty, we need to know where they're going. But I mean, there's a lot.
I will find out.
Yeah.
If you're trying to buy that kind of money in taps.
Go to Harbor Freight, order them right out of Harbor Freight for a dollar fifty apiece.
You get them from that place.
Yeah.
And I believe those are the cheap blue taps, so you know, they're not.
They're not very good. I buy them at Harbor Freight, a dollar fifty-nine apiece.
I don't know what they're using them for.
They don't last.
Yeah, I don't know what they're using them for, because they don't last.
That's just a lot of taps.
Well, I know there's been a lot of painting on the inside of Gilman Museum.
That's enough to cover the outside, inside, and in here.
There's a lot of stuff in there, and I don't know how big these trucks are, but they can't be huge.
Who's been doing the painting?
But if you're buying.
From the maintenance.
But my thing is, why ain't they painting the outside? That we've been trying to get painted for five years. That's coming up on my next. You got to get on the ladder.
That's a little something different. Gabby's been doing the paint, well, probably Gabby, but you know, on the inside, but you know, that was very different.
So we're going to get an answer back on those taps?
Yes.
Yes, she is. The president is working on it.
I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman, Vice Chairman?
Yes.
If there's a problem with the three, I believe the three hardware stores in town.
Yes.
I don't know how you can divide the business equally, dollar wise.
Well, to me, to me.
That's an issue you have.
Yeah, it is, and to me, we should be using the people that have been here in town, supporting us for forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years. And Mr. Dodge's hardware's been there since the eighteen hundreds. I mean, we should be supporting the people that live in this town, their kids go to school in this town, and they're paying the taxes in this town, not a big conglomerate.
Well, they have employees down there that live in town, so.
Some of them, some of them don't.
And I think the business should be divided up the best we can do it, and I don't know what the answers are and how you.
I've always coached the department that have had questions about department stores, use all three, spread it around as best you can, you know.
Across the month, oh, spread it out each day, and then spread it out again.
Something they're at certain ones and not others.
Bills and robust ones.
Maybe the employees, the department head should be reminded of that.
I will do that.
Just that, but the whole, the whole ball, you know?
They're pretty good about that. Yeah.
I don't know about that.
Is that it?
That's it for me. Now, we're on Community Center Museum.
Yes, sir.
I'll just wait for you to come back.
Thank you.
The Alton Bay Community Center, so a few minutes yesterday, walked around. We've been shaking the can down the road, like Virgil says many times, and it's getting worse. The ceilings, they're peeling, the paint's peeling off the buildings, the shingles are disrepair. And at one point, we could have just replaced it, it's getting to the point of Mike starting thinking about replacement. She was at when I was a kid, with the railings on that when I was a kid. Railings that, you know, the railroad park, railings and all the deck area, that all needs to be resealed, all redone, some loose boards, some re-screwed. Railings, some of the ballasts will need to be replaced, ballasters on the community center itself are all twisting, taken personal. Twist them, they need to be renailed, I just think we've really been kicking the can down the road. We really need to start thinking about taking it one step at a time through the roof, through the trim, through the siding, and stop, stop thinking about how we're going to do this, and start organizing some of our employees to try to get some of these projects done, because we just keep kicking it down the road, and it's not getting done, and I looked at it closely, and it's getting pretty bad.
You said a warrant, I'll go up for rob. Maintenance of town buildings or something, no?
Well, there is a capital reserve fund for the Alton Bay Community Center, that was created, I think, a couple of years ago. Kelly submitted it, I just don't know how much money is in it, and I'm sure she's probably going, I actually sent her an email about a week ago, suggesting that she submit a request for a warrant, or at least something in all of these community center capital reserve funds. Even if it's just a thousand dollars, not.
But we should ask for twenty-five thousand so we can do, you know, the roof and a little bit of paint or whatever we got to do, because when you get the roof, you're going to get trim that's no good.
You've got to just get the ball rolling, and start doing some of this work, and at least get things done.
I got, I have an idea.
Maybe when the warrant article comes forward, you can decide on the dollar.
It's true, and I think outside of the, we should ask to sell the West Dalton Community Center. It's been out there now for two years, we've asked people to come forward that want to use it, we put a new roof on it, no one has come forward, and that whole neighborhood or within the town that want to use it.
No.
Sell that and ask.
Sell the fire station?
Ask townspeople, if we sell them, I'll make a use of it, be able to divide those funds, be put in each of our other community buildings for me. Here's what she's going to tell me, well, I'm going to throw it out there anyway. But as far as the museum goes, I think if I need to select an old contractor, go up to them and say, would you give us a request or a proposal to paint the outside trim? You know somebody that can do that, have them give you a proposal.
I haven't mentioned that.
And have it.
We've done that to you, and it didn't go anywhere.
Well, no.
Right, that was a bid, that was a big process, we decided no.
Okay.
But we had people come into the museum and give bids, and you might as well kick the can down the road, because they got thrown up, never brought.
I think that, Tom, kick the can.
Well, that's what we do. That's what we do, is kick the can down the road, it takes four, five years to get anything done. Go ahead, before you go, say.
Well, I was just, I was going to recommend, actually, like, rather than do it the formal bid process, which does cost some money to put it into the newspaper, perhaps you all would know local people who do this sort of work, and maybe they could come up with an estimate cost, or maybe the selectmen could get together and paint it, or I, you know.
Well, we've done the process, I personally asked a few people to actually come in and bid, look at it. I know we talked about our own town employees, taking a few, a little bit at a time, to do what we can do. It's all what you want to do, I just know, at this point, we just keep talking about it, between Gilman Museum and some of the other repairs that need to be done in the town, we're not doing anything. I still have to talk to, I mean, the code enforcement officer about the outside air conditioning units, to finish that, that was something that needs to be priced on. It was just a small project on that as well, but some of these things that need to get done, we're already at the end of summer.
And just so you know, on your list of capital reserve accounts that you should have, Alton Bay Community Center, it's coming December, there will be ten thousand dollars in it from March twenty twenty.
I find it interesting that I was approached by a constituent at the car show yesterday, who said she'd like to see a heavier police presence around the seven o'clock hour in the evening, because she thinks the kids are doing damage to that. They're claiming it as their own hangout spot.
Museum?
Yeah, not the museum, no, the Community Center in Alton Bay. I don't know if that's true or not.
Can we send word down?
Yeah.
But I promised her that.
Send word down?
Mentioned.
I have one other thing on that, Community Center in West Dalton. I think we better read that lease real good, because if the town ain't using it, it goes back to the bank.
Well, that's the other thing that has to hear, because it's still, attorney's still tied in that, so.
So, we're still, right, there's still some legal attachments to that property, which is joined by two easements, one for water, one for sewer. The trustees of the trust funds were awarded these properties per the probate, I mean, per the probate court in early, early two thousand and sixteen. And so, and there were a few thousand dollars that were dropped off here from the previous association for those, well, one, the fire station in particular. And so, before anything could be done, there's a lot of things that need to be weeded out and.
But does that hold up? The original intent to that was he donated to the town for town use. If the town ain't going to use it, if that doesn't give the town the right to sell it, it has to be given back.
So that's a legal question I don't have any answer for.
That's what I'm saying, we better check it, or we do much of anything.
That's what I want to say.
But I knew Harold, I knew Harold Clark very, very well, when that all was, I was a kid when we were not, did it, I did the system, the system and the sewer pipe, and everything. That's how I knew that sewer pipe died across.
The court order probably trumps it all, but except for, you know, the easements remain.
It trumps it as long as we're using it. If it doesn't trump it, you can't change the intent of a gift.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Who's in charge of the Community Center?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. Which is led by the Parks and Rec Director. Have they requested any of this, or?
No, there's still no heat up there.
They can wait a couple times a year.
No, I mean, have they requested any of this work?
No.
Painting and so forth.
Well, this way, this is, the West Dalton one is different than the Baker. Listen, one Paul Stock found is.
One today.
Yeah, well, that's the one I'm talking about. They have not requested any, this is the observation of Mr. Rochelle, going around, looking at things, and just saying, things are down. There's a piece of shingle that sat in, missing for two years, have a look that may have been popped, see if it's still missing. Okay, so now it's gone on three years, the shingle has been missing and hasn't been fixed, which could be leaking somewhere upstairs, maybe, maybe not. It's just one of those things, Mr. Rochelle's going around seeing peeling paint, or pressure treated lumber that hasn't been treated over a certain period of years.
Long time.
And it's standing there, Mr. Chairman. We have a department that's in charge of taking care of it. It's just like, I brought an issue up one night here about parking, and I was told to go to the seat and cheat.
Would you like to have the Town Administrator go to the Parks and Rec Director, Billy, and the person who charged Billy Roden's maintenance, have him look at that? What can be done down there as far as maintenance, screwing back in the ballasters, doing things well?
I mean, it's my things, but yeah.
We should meet with Paul and walk around with him.
I wouldn't mind walking around with any of them.
And we can get them back for what they can do and what they can't do, because you all know.
No problem with that, Paul doesn't mind doing that. If he has a list of what he knows needs to be done, have that handed to him, say, this is what I'm saying, is this something you can handle?
Because you're right, there hasn't been any request to do anything or anything that's been said to pick up and do any work.
No, Kelly's been doing it by little, Kelly's been doing a little bit each year down there, I do know that.
You know what, you think?
No. She was doing a little paint down there last year.
They did the bathrooms.
Yeah, okay, so they didn't work the inside, tried to. They didn't look painting outside, they fixed a lot of the paint outside that was bad last year.
The ceilings, like I said, since we're still on the subject, the ceilings are all peeling, they all need to be done. All the trim, the posts, the exterior trim, some of the crown molding's starting to peel and pull off, it's starting to fall off. The, there's debris on the roof, there's branches hanging out of the edge, that type of thing. It really is starting to look shabby. Crown molding's falling off, then you got water over there. Crown molding is on the, it's, it's. So that's why I took the liberty of walking around it, and I started bringing it to our attention, so we can go see.
The other thing is, if we, now that the community center, there's always too many scrapes, we have to take in the content of the lead act. Lead would have to be tested down. That's what was happening out at the water bay, because of the age of the building.
Yeah.
The age of that building. Such a long before, you probably had three, four, five layers of latex paint.
Or lace.
Could have lead up, the only thing, the only reason I bring that up is because we have so many people walking through there and stuff, in case they were scraping.
We painted it mid-sixties.
Well, we painted it before that, we just painted it about ten years ago.
No, no, I mean, back with the black paint.
But the railings and stuff were redone over in the nineties, when we got the grant, redo the whole down at the bay, railings were redone then. They've been treated with some water seal over the years, never, never a good stain.
So, all dry, dry, dry.
They don't get done, pressure washed and sealed. They don't get done until three to five years, and that's too long ago, especially in the sun, the weather hits down.
Just to wear and tear.
If you'd like to have Mr. Rochelle meet with the Parks and Rec Director, Billy Roden's person, John Javino, I have no question.
Mr. Rochelle.
Does anybody still have a board? Do I tell them, tell me that Mr. Trump, on Mr. Rochelle, we contacted, any sort of appointment at Town Meeting? Anything else on that, Paul?
Oh, that's it, and the other was Gilman Museum.
Tell them if you know of some painters, ask them to go by and give you a call, a written proposal of what they would do, what the cost would be. I think two years ago, it came in around eighteen hundred dollars, one contractor.
Just under two thousand.
Yep.
That was fixing the rotten trim and painting the whole building.
Was it?
Yeah. Last year, year four?
And that was just for the outside, but another person submitted one for interior and exterior at the same time, which came with quite a great amount, we were just, we never got it done.
Well, I got to say, Gabby does a pretty good job on interior. I mean, as you can see in the town hall and stuff, she does a pretty good job, she's over the museum now attacking, so.
So, gentlemen, if you know of a contractor, ask them to go down and possibly turn, say, give me a proposal, submit it to the Town Administrator. See if we can get it done by the middle, by September fifteenth, because our seasons are going to start closing in on us.
He wants you to paint.
You guys all will paint, I'll paint. Okay, that was number four, anything else? To move on to old business, that was the old business, selectmen report? So, Rochelle?
No, I, that was her, yeah.
Your constant.
Well, that's the only thing that went well.
That's all, they went well?
Yeah.
The whole week didn't go well?
The whole, no, the week went well, but constant went well.
Um, October's very nice.
Mr. Whitman?
We had our last meeting of the Illinois committee on the eleventh, and at that time, I found out that there were food trucks happening, and there were cars coming. And I had mentioned about, you know, a year ago, we talked about Roger would talk with the hardware store about having certain spaces, and I was under the impression that that was happening, then comes the car show, I guess.
That's too late.
Ends up a little different.
You weren't down there to control it?
No, I was kind of down there.
He announced me when I walked in, he announced me over the speakers.
Are you in control?
Jam, I both of you. As soon as I come walking down the sidewalk, I.
Anything else, anything else, though?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
Conservation with their, getting ready to walk their lots and check them out, and they're working on trying to get some conservation easements on a few other lots.
Mr. Whitman?
As far as this week, I have nothing for you.
I have a plan for tomorrow night.
So I can stop there at that point and turn it over to the Town Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, the first item I have to report on would be the U.S. census, actually, and Nicole McKenzie.
They going door to door or mailing?
No, she wants to set up the bay, it's a water ski shop.
Anyways, Nicole McKenzie is in attendance, we're going to have to figure out which person she is on the Zoom program. She would like to speak to you about the U.S. census and ask permission to be able to set up a table in the bay on the day of the water ski program, to try to capture some of the seasonal homeowners as far as doing the census.
When did this?
She can explain it more. Well, you have an email here, August eleventh. Yes, August eleventh. They have, they have been up there before, they, you know, they sat in front of the restaurant one weekend, and she can tell you about the statistics as far as it can be pretty low, which is kind of sad.
They've done it before. Why do they need our permission?
Well, when they did it before, it was, they got permission from the restaurant. Well, when they did it before, it was in, they got permission from the restaurant.
Oh, okay.
Well, I got, I got a question.
I hope I can answer it, but.
I'm gonna ask you, well, you said it with all the numbers, she told you all the numbers were low, and you thought it was sad.
Yeah.
Did the people at the town of Alton get mailed the census?
I haven't.
I can't handle that.
I haven't received one yet.
Oh, good, okay, she is here.
Well, then I would love to introduce.
I don't see an email.
And see, and talk to her and chat about it.
I, you know, it's interesting, because I, I just learned a couple weeks ago that people with whose primary residence are not in Alton, but they have a secondary home, they still have to do the census for the secondary home. And they don't think that, uh, the census people don't think that a lot of the second homeowner type folks realize this.
Well.
And here's one guy that hasn't even done the census at all.
Then we, then we should.
Now, where am I supposed to get to pick work for the census?
You can just go online.
Why should I go online?
I haven't got mine, I haven't got mine, they had mailed it to me.
Nicole, can you explain it?
Well, I'd like to say something, the people that have the second homes will have to charge their taxes to make up the difference.
Nicole?
All right, make up the difference that way.
Go on, gentlemen.
Nicole, are you there?
I am, and I think I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can now, yep.
Uh, fantastic, fantastic.
I'll turn it over to you, Nicole.
Okay, um, so I live in Alton, and I'm, I've been working for the census for about a year and a half now, um, going around the state. And one, we have, um, a self-response rate map that we're looking at right now, and I'm really trying to focus on towns that have low self-response rates. Unfortunately, Alton, um, the self-response rate right now in Alton is thirty-eight point six percent. Um, our state's average is sixty-three point six percent. So we're, we're quite a bit behind, and I've talked to Liz about it, and, you know, we kinda brainstormed. I believe a lot has to do with, we have so many seasonal property owners, um, that do not know they need to respond for the census for their secondary home. Um, so we're trying to get that information out, we're also trying to remind Alton residents, if they haven't responded, um, to do so, because we have census takers that are starting to go out now, door to door, they go to the houses that haven't responded. Um, I'm finding, as I go across the state, people, some people want to have a census person at their door to help them enumerate. Other people would, would like to avoid that. Um, one of the best ways to avoid that is to self-respond. Um, so what we're trying, what I'm requesting of you all is to, um, be able to have a presence down at the bay uh, on the day of the, the, um, the show, and have a table there. We're doing these all over the state in some of the, the harder to count areas, um, where we have a table set up, we have a tent. We're there to basically remind people to respond, to provide information, um, for them and answer questions, and then also, um, to actually assist someone right on site if they want to do their census right there and then. Um, we have a table, we follow safety protocols, wear masks, safe distance, all of that. Um, so, you know, we're just looking to go to places where there are people, where we can get this message out. And any other ideas you might have on how to reach out to Alton residents?
What happened to the mailing? Um, you used to mail out a sheet to fill out, mail it back in.
We did, we, we, we sent mailings out, um, some of, if you have. Do you have a P.O. box?
Yes, I do.
All right, because, um, we, P.O. boxes, we don't mail to P.O. boxes, we only mail to, to, um, households, to, to the actual physical address.
Why wouldn't you mail to P.O. boxes?
We don't, we, because we don't, we don't mail to people, we, we mail to a residence, like a place where someone could live. So.
Because I am.
Basically, um, March eleventh, we started, um, going out and hanging up on the doorknob of houses in Alton that, um, received their mail at the post office box, because we don't, we don't, we don't forget about a house if they get their mail at the, the post office box. We actually send people out to hang up the packet on the doors. We started that operation March eleventh, March thirteenth, it was basically shut down because of COVID. Um, and, and actually, I can remember some of the Alton community pages, people were, were concerned in Alton because census takers were leaving things at their house, and I think they were nervous about it. Um, we did start that, that process back up in, um, June and finished it. So, I mean, if, if you have not received anything, you should have. Um, but the bottom line is, you can go online and fill it out, you can call it in, and you can also have somebody help at one of these, um, tables that we set up in different areas.
First of all, I don't use a computer. Second of all, why wouldn't you mail it to a P.O. box? I mean, I own a resident, and I get mail at the post office.
Yeah.
People aren't making sense.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, Nicole, Nicole, I'm just gonna inject, she's only doing the job instructed by her superiors.
I know, but it, it doesn't make.
But she's down hard on hers, she's only coming up.
I'm not coming, all right, I'm sorry if I come down hard on you, but it doesn't make sense to me not to use a P.O. box for the people in town. I mean, a hundred, there's over a hundred P.O. boxes down there, the people have residents.
Oh, I know there's a lot of P.O. boxes, yeah. You know, that, I mean, that is way above my grade level, that's Washington to work out with the, the postmaster general in Washington. Um, you know, with COVID hitting, nor, our normal process would be, we would be physically going out and hanging those up. That, that operation did get stopped during COVID in March, um, and then we tried to re, re, we started it back up again, so there may have been addresses missed in Alton. Um, that may be part of why our response rate is so low. Trust me, I've been trying to figure this out, I live in Alton, um, you know, and here I'm working for the census, and the town I live in has one of the lowest self-response rates. Um, it's frustrating, I get ribbed a lot from my peers about that. Um, so I've been, you know, I'm, I'm trying to do what I can to help the, the response rate in our town, because it does drive dollars, drives federal dollars, and, and need that.
But you also need to rib them to do it right. I mean, a lot of us people, none of us on this board has received anything.
And you all have, and you all have P.O. boxes?
P.O. boxes, and we also have residences on streets where you just said you completed all the houses earlier, I never still have one on my doorknob. Or maybe, maybe, this is just a little joke, Nicole, so don't take this seriously, maybe it's like the mail-in balance, it's gonna be conspiracy. Sorry, I just had to.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Uh, you know, I, I, what I am doing, when I hear, and, and honestly, there are other places in New Hampshire where I've had people say to me, we, I never received my paper questionnaire. Um, and what I'm doing is I'm taking those addresses down, and I put them in our geography, um, spreadsheet, and then they, they look at that. Um, but we are now at the point where September thirtieth is, is when we're gonna finish the, the counting. Um, so, you know, we can look back, and I can try to find out what happened or not happened, but the bottom line is, I, I'm trying to work to make sure Alton gets the complete and accurate count.
Can you do us a favor? On that spreadsheet that you're using, writing down people's addresses, can you write the town of Alton on it? So they go street by street again, 'cause they've missed a lot of houses.
Yeah. No, I can, I mean, honest, that, that, I've been, I've been wondering why Alton, 'cause, because in the two thousand and ten final count for Alton, um, the final self-response count, not before the cen, before the census takers go out, the rate was around sixty-eight percent, sixty-nine percent. So, I mean, we're, we're quite a bit below that. Um, and, and I, it's not all seasonal homeowners, so you're right, it, it very well could be people who never received their questionnaire that wanted to, to have the option of filling out that paper questionnaire and mailing it in.
Yeah, 'cause I don't have a computer.
Do you have a phone? Because we have a, we have a one eight hundred number, it's, it's really easy to call. I mean, this is the first year of any census where you can call it in, and you can also do it online. Or if you were at the bay, if you let us set up a, a table at the bay, you could actually come and visit us at that table this weekend, and, um, there's a census person there that would help you enumerate right there and then.
Don't move.
I don't know, to me, it depends how many immigrants are down there, whether I go down or not.
Virgil?
Thank you, Nicole, for explaining this to us, and hopefully some of us will get online or call Maggie Hassan and Gene Shaheed and voice our opinion.
We have to do a vote?
Um, I do need a vote to allow the U.S. Census state to set up a booth down at the bay, and I would like the particular area, though, not to be in, to crowd out the, um, land bandstand, so I'm thinking maybe across the land bandstand, you have the grass area right?
Yes.
Yeah, wherever, if, wherever you tell me to set up, I, I'm happy to do that, I have a twelve, we have a twelve by twelve tent. And we can just, we could, we could just do this.
Got a twelve by twelve tent. That, that would still, they'd go all the way twelve times.
Is that all right with you, right across from the land bandstand on that little grass area?
Right across from the land bandstand, like adjacent, right next to it, where the picnic tables are?
No, right across, right across the parking lot from it, the grass area by the sidewalk. That way you get both sides.
You get two, you have two benches right there.
Yeah.
One on each side.
That would be perfect. What I, what I'll do is I could go down and take a picture to make sure I know exactly where you want us, unless someone would be there that more, you know, before the event, to, I just don't wanna set up in the wrong spot, I believe I know.
Went to the land bandstand, went to the land bandstand, watched, watched, looking at it in front of it, right in the center of it, walked right straight across the park lot, you'd see those two benches right there with those two grass areas.
Okay, yep, I know what you mean.
I, I think, to me, that'd be a great location.
Off of both sides, you work both sides of it.
Gentlemen, can I have a motion to approve Nicole McKenzie, U.S. Census taker, requesting permission to set up a census table in the bay during the water ski show?
Some of it.
May, by, by, by Rochelle to approve Nicole McKenzie, U.S. Census taker, requesting permission to set up a census table at the bay during the water ski show, second by Virgil McDonald, any other discussion? Baltimore and Mr. Whitman? Yes, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes, most of Virgil, thank you, Nicole.
Good luck.
Well, thank you, and please come and see us if you're, if you're there.
Y'all work, sorry.
Well, we really appreciate it.
If you can stop by and see me, and I'll give you my information.
Can you mail Reuben a ballot?
All right.
I, we can, we can stop by. Thank you so much, bye-bye.
Bye-bye, bye.
Number two.
All right, um. Labor Day weekend, that Monday, seven.
What are we on, Kim?
That would be your regular selectmen's meeting if the holidays were closed. Yeah, I had Mary create, or Stacy create this. You wanna reschedule it for another day that week, or just skip it, and, you know, the next Monday would be like a budget workshop, or what would you like to do?
Primary day is on the eighth, so we can't do it then, we got Wednesday the ninth, the room is open if you kind of wanna do it, or.
You got ninth, tenth?
Because it'll be two weeks before you have a dinner item, because next week will be a workshop. You got the bat, workshop, and then you'd be missing a regular meeting, going to a third workshop without having a meeting. So I would suggest if you wanted to meet on the ninth.
I mean, you got ninth or tenth?
Well, the tenth.
That's the conservation commission.
Yeah, that's downstairs.
Downstairs, the high.
Yeah.
What's the workshop next? Administrator hasn't told us, well, next week we have a public hearing on the gift.
No.
Right? Public hearing on the gift of the crosswalks, nine inches in the bay.
Right, that'll be the twenty-fourth, thank you.
Yeah.
Ninth would work for me.
Mr. Holt? What else, kind of like anyways, like me? Mr. Rochelle?
What day do you think?
The ninth.
Wednesday the ninth?
Yeah.
Mr. Whitman, you said nine five?
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah.
Now, to the town administrator, I would say if it was like tonight, that she didn't really have much, and we had to actually amend the general having meeting, maybe we should just pass on the meeting.
I agree.
Feel more heavy shoulders today, huh? Okay, so we'll be meeting on the ninth at six P.M. Number three for the town administrator.
Um, all right, we kinda touched on it a little earlier about capital reserve funds for buildings and everything, but you have this list, this is a two-page list of all the existing accounts, and I just didn't know if maybe there was a particular, any particular ones that you would want to have a warrant article on, or particular ones you would not. Um, I'm gonna be sending out an email to the department heads, asking them to submit their regular, uh, you know, warrant articles, and I suggested to Kelly, you know, a week ago, that she submit warrant articles on the structures, that she's responsible for, even if it's just a thousand dollars, start a little something each year for any kind of repairs. Um, a lot of these you'll be receiving anyways as warrant articles through the C.I.P. program. Um, is there any, do you have any suggestions?
I have one question for.
Yes.
Are we waiting until budget season to move money to, um, warrant articles for like water patents? We have not done that, we're gonna do it at the end of the year.
In the water department, money could be moved at any time, but I'd like to have a breakdown from when we established the water revenue fund.
Right.
What's been expended out of that? Started off with a regional account, which was around two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. There still should at least be added in there, unless, it's like, you know, years that we've given the money to cap into that. They've been able to follow the budget to and through, that money, this like, can move at any time, because that money, some of that was retrieved last year from the capital reserve funds, special water revenue fund, we could put that money in there, in those reserves, and I think we should ask the town administrator for that.
Yeah, I, well, I just wanna get it on the agenda, so we, because we're gonna move it last year, we haven't done it yet. And I'd like to get it into the fund.
So, on the ninth. But if I call you, um, this week, setting this up, or what? I know Virgil's looking for, I'm looking for, on all the waterworks, revenue fund, reserves accounts that we're, I'm putting together. And the figure you have to know, didn't know what I was talking about, it's basically that rev, special, that revenue fund we established for the water property three years ago. The money didn't go into, into the general fund anymore, it just stood there, we had, so we got the mission gut back, we changed a couple of the, um, capital reserve accounts last year for the water property. So that money from revenue account should be going to those capital reserves, so we're not keep touching that general revenue account. Because we started off with a nice, healthy fund, and slowly, Virgil, as I am, afraid that some of that might slowly get worked out.
Worked out.
We worked hard to find that money.
We tried to build that back up.
Hundred and thirty thousand, I believe, was, I don't have the records, but, just, I just hate to see it all sudden get down to a hundred thousand, we didn't move any of that money in the general fund.
We worked, we worked pretty hard to get it, money there to have money to work with that.
So usually, for something like that, where you have to go to a private enterprise, when you wait till the end of the year and decide how much goes into which.
Two years, the end of the year, it's coming on, and it's, that money, it seems to me, what I'm seeing is shrinking.
Well, the regular expenses are coming out of it, too.
But, but you're right, but each year we budgeted for those expenses through revenues.
Right.
So the money we started for the short, we started with, and the surpluses we had for two years, one year should have added more money to that, not less money.
You're receiving a monthly report from the finance.
That's why I've been following that, and sometimes it does, it's like a town meeting, you wanna ask Laura, and she's, and Virgil said, yes, she could bring one column over.
Yeah.
So it's something I wanna sit down and go over with, and I understand that, but if each, end of the year comes, we don't do anything, this week going in, it's just sitting there, where possibly it could be of better interest sitting in the reserve account versus just a.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Man, can we combine some of these funds? You've got town beach restoration, town beach fund, town beach fund.
So that, that is a whole. That's a whole, um, so you can always combine accounts, you have to dissolve it.
Right.
And warrant articles, and, and it's quite a process, but yes, it's possible to do.
Yeah, and have the people vote on it again to combine these accounts, so we don't have, you know, I mean.
I, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, and.
Well, just like town beach funds, we have the town beach, town beach restoration, town beach park. I mean, they're all for the beach fund, whether it's restoration, or dredging, or whatever we're gonna do. You know, we, and we need to set up a fund for the wall down there.
So it, it really depends on the purpose of when it was created. So if I recall correctly, apparently, one is for the actual beach, and the other one is for the rest of that park. So I think there would be, need to be some research done on it, she'll, to get the, the exact purpose. If you have specific ones that you'd like to do that with, let me know what it is, and I'll get all the documents and bring, bring them back to you.
Can I get the paperwork on the sidewalk fund?
Which one?
Twelve twenty-eight oh seven.
Yes.
Is that the bay fund, or is that the?
No, the bay one says bay in it, and there are like. No, the bay one says bay in it, and there are like three, three or four other sidewalk funds, it's actually one fund, but.
No, 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 we have two funds, one's the bay, one's the town.
I know, there are two separate funds, but the regular sidewalk ones, that doesn't have the word bay in it, there's actually like three or four different accounts on the list, and come to find out, it's truly only one account at the financial institution. There were some things.
Sidewalk fund, Frank, install it.
Things that happened. Well, so Dave Thinks There Is Working On That, it's very difficult to get a data entry mistake repaired at the financial institution to, to show that it's one fund. There were some things that happened years ago, you really need to talk to him about it when you.
But if, but if we have to, we put it in front of the people and combine them that way.
Yes, if they truly are separate accounts. Some of these are bequeathed trust, that you, you can't do that with. And then some of the others, like what I was just talking about, it's a keeping error.
Well, that's what I think has happened here, because the sidewalk fund should have a, a lot more than, especially had almost eighty thousand dollars combined with the two of them, and now is six hundred and seven dollars. All right, babe.
So gentlemen, so let's, let's look at these warrant articles, see if there's anything you want, if you have interest in, and bring it back. Uh, second budget workshop, should be thirty-first, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Right, if you have that time. Number four, budget meetings.
Great, so with these budget me, uh, meetings coming up, um, starting to get questions from the department heads, asking if they need to attend in person, or can they attend remotely? And I have been telling them that as it stands right now, all the department heads are attending remotely anyways, and there, it really shouldn't be.
I like, I would like to have it.
Like to have it, yeah.
But you need to keep in mind the state of emergency and the pandemic.
One, two, three, four.
I, I don't think you should be forcing people to attend in person if they do not feel comfortable doing that during this time.
Well, then, then I guess I would say that at this time, then, I mean, one, they come in with masks, they, there'd be more than six feet away, they could sit at that table right there, so that's more about twenty-five feet away from us. They don't move, they're sterilized. Secondly, is, if they don't want to come in and sit in the forest, do they stay home? Do they go from their office here, town hall, and go to the house every night and stay there, or no?
No, but, but I, I'm not debating this.
I know, I understand.
I'm just, I'm just saying that.
I don't know why anybody would be afraid to come in here, when I see them all out in the public, talking, other people don't mask them, although rather than, by the way, things are working in town fall, so. I guess, you know, I understand the concern and. Six months, but there's a simpler way to do it. They don't want to come in, it's fine, we just cut fifty percent right out.
The state of emergency wasn't declared on March thirteenth.
They, they say all the six months, right?
Do you have a general consensus, who doesn't want to come in? Is there, is there one department head, or another that wouldn't mind coming in?
I haven't spoken to them all, but I know that some are concerned. And I just wanted to throw this out there for your knowledge, I, I don't think you should force people to come in here if they don't feel comfortable doing it.
You're, you're right, we shouldn't force them, we are recommending it.
Yeah.
Conversation on that.
Yep.
Oh, I look at it this way, tell them, put down their best justification for me.
Yeah.
And then I don't need them here. I can do it without them, as long as they have their justification for us to allow, they shouldn't have any questions. I have a question, we'll ask you, you can get it first.
It's easy to have without them here anyways.
This, it's just, it's very hard to, you know, this issue.
I'm not saying that everybody's not going to come in.
I understand that, I know that, I understand, I know there might be a few.
Let's play it by ear.
Why don't you play it?
See what you've started.
I sound like, I'm now.
As long as they have everything for us, all spelled out, and no questions.
Okay, thank you.
I sound like Virgil now.
Two pieces of vodka.
Whatever you'd like to do next, ma'am. Your side.
That, that was the last line of my whole presentation.
Sure.
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay, gentlemen, moving on to approval of minutes. August tenth, twenty twenty regularly, we had no non-public session.
Make a motion that we approve August tenth, twenty twenty minutes.
By the second. Second. May my Mr. McDonald approve the minutes of August tenth, twenty twenty regular session. If I missed the whole, any discussion? Will the board, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes, both confirmative. Now, the motion to approve the agents, a consent that gentleman has submitted. Hold move, Mr. Jim. May my Mr. Holt to approve the consent that gentleman has submitted, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Rochelle, any discussion? Being none, I'll hold the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, both confirmative. discretionary action appointments, being none, move on, we do have a non-public, we have paperwork out here. Motion. The motion being in the non-public session. So it's RS eight ninety-one dash eight, colon, three, paragraph two A.
Second.
May my Mr. Wentworth in the non-public session, on the RS eight ninety-one dash eight, colon, three, paragraph two A, second by Mr. McDonald, I'll hold the board. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, both confirmative votes, that's seven seventeen, will be entering the non-public session, we'll be coming out of that in a little bit, we will let you know when you come out, thank you for joining us tonight. Stay tuned, and we will be back.